To the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All the meeting to order. First thing we're going to be doing is having the open public forum. We're going to start with the open public forum. And we're going to, I'm sorry, yeah, this is not the, um, the public hearing. Just the two-minute open public forum. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Go ahead, Barb.
Can I just talk from here?
Sure, go ahead.
On the side of my path, hey, you've made out a truck road for a block. But there's no signage on the highways, so truckers don't know that they can turn that direction. It's easy to figure out. You can turn down Main Street, but they don't know that you can turn the other way. I had two DFA guys today. And two of them walked and the other one was going to come up and I saw him hesitate with his truck at the intersection. And he had nowhere to park. So could we get some kind of signage up there that says truck road? Or something?
Yeah, we can, um, who's on street committee? You guys talk to Gordy and see if there's something that could be put there so that they can see where the truck route is.
Oh, yeah, because you can't see that truck road a block down in the trees.
Alright, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Not about County Road 57, but anything else? If not, we're going to approve the agenda. Don, do you have anything to add? Subtract?
Just Mr. Mayor, that we had talked that, given the public hearing tonight, that we would just be removing approval of the resolution, item A and B under new business. Be removing that just to allow the council just to digest the comments that you hear tonight and just have some time to think about the public comments, take any phone calls, and then if the council so chose to address that resolution at a later meeting, you could. But perhaps it'd be going too fast to deal with it tonight.
Okay, that sounds good. We'll remove that. Lyle, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay, Pete?
Yep, sidewalks. Input under miscellaneous.
Julie?
I do not.
Dale, do you have anything?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Bob?
No, sir.
Jenny, was there anything else? Okay. I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
Don't move.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Everybody get a chance to look over everything. Claims, the part-time compensation payout, the hiring for the park. If everybody has read that, I'll entertain a motion again.
I'm approval of consent agenda.
Julie has made a motion.
Seconded.
And seconded by Dale. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we're going to open up the public hearing and how I'd like to do this is, um, to start with, we're going to have the engineer, Tim Becker, explain what the project is going to be. And then we're going to open it up to comments. And we're going to limit everyone to three minutes per person for your comment. So, Tim? Forward?
Alright, thank you.
You bet.
Would like to appreciate, uh, thank everybody for coming out tonight. The county, we've been looking at this project for about a year now. And what the project consists of is reconstructing a portion of County Road 57 from the state highway up to county state aid highway 10. It's about two and a half miles, of which about half a mile is inside the city limits here. Right now, County Road 57 is a county road. No state aid funding gets applied to that. The county would like to consider converting this roadway over to a CASA fund or a CASA roadway and then be able to leverage some of the CASA funding on any road improvements that we have looked at doing. Right now...
A CASA is just county state aid highway, correct?
Correct. Right now, the existing roadway consists of roughly a 12-foot lane with a very narrow one-foot shoulder in town from State Highway 19 up to just past, uh, half-mile past 19, I guess, quarter-mile past A Street. And then from that point to the north, it's a gravel section roadway. If we would convert the roadway over to be a CASA roadway, we would require, uh, the state would require that we actually put the minimum of a four-foot shoulder on the roadway, which would require that we would have to purchase some additional right-of-way from the landowners along the project because we would have to build some new store and sewer, some new ponds to accommodate the additional range. The county is looking at paving the roadway all the way from State Highway 19 up to County State Aid Highway 10. A second option that we are looking at for the roadway would be fixing the roadway kind of in place the way it is, not really expanding that right-of-way or the shoulder width. So, those are the two options kind of we're looking at right now. I guess I can field some questions, specific questions for the audience, for the council?
Gary, you're the commissioner from our area, and I know this is a project that you are interested in. I mean, is there anything you...
I just, you know, Tim alluded to that. I think, uh, the thing, Tim, they, correct me if I'm wrong, but from A Street out or to 10, that is already a 50-foot, uh, eastward 50-foot right-of-way, correct?
To the north, correct.
Correct. So, even if we did decide to go with this, uh, we could widen that there and not in town. The thing of it is, is that you as a council are the ones that are making this decision whether or not this project is go-ahead with the, uh, moving of the utilities, which I would like to get a better handle on. I mean, there was figures been thrown out, and I don't know how accurate they are, 300,000, I've heard, less than that, a lot less than that. So, I think that that needs to be some due diligence on the council's part. And again, there's one, you know, this project, you're going to get one chance at this. One in, I mean, this road has lasted, what, 20-some years?
Last time it was rebuilt, it was 1984, I think.
So, you're going to get one chance of 20-some years here. Make this and make it right. And if there's any housing or any project going out there, I gotta believe that they're going to want something that they can easily walk to, uh, whether it be to get around town to the dollar stores around town, uh, you know, and public safety's an issue there, too. I've had people come up to me and, you know, they are here tonight, unfortunately, but, you know, they said, you know, "I can't tell you how many times I almost hit a person out there. I wish the road, I wish the shoulder were wider." And I know that the owners, the landowners on there, that's a contentious thing because they don't want to lose anyone on property. So, you know, you've got to weigh those options. I assume if anybody's got any questions, they can ask away, but I guess that's just my point of view is to, you know, you got one shot in 20 years to do this.
Okay.
I guess, Gary, I would like to comment, you know, essentially, the center of the road is going to stay in the same location. All we would be doing is adding these six-foot shoulders or a four-foot shoulder, and then the rest of it would still remain lawn in front of the house. I would like the council to consider, you know, the item A and B at some point in time in the near future, we can discuss, because the county would need a resolution of approval for the project being formed as a CASA.
Right.
That is something that state aid does require because they, they want the cities to support CASA projects when they're inside the city limits. So, that would require that the two things that are on the agenda at a future, I guess, may look at. Other questions?
So, are you still talking about a 50-foot roadbed that first up to E Street?
Um, the road, no, uh, the roadbed, we would have a 12-foot lane and ideally, I mean, we would go with a six-foot shoulder from 19, what's that?
And then...
And that edge.
So, you're looking at 50 feet, some 100 little...
Uh, 50 feet would be our maximum width. We might be able to vary that in and out. 42 would probably be the minimum right-of-way width.
And then the city also has easement beyond that, right? So, we could be looking at 60, 65 feet from center road?
66, I think.
Some of the city's easements and our easement could overlap, depending on where the utilities are located. They don't have to occupy different space, they can occupy the same space.
I don't know if they will. There's a question.
Yeah, one of many.
So, you must have changed your tune from what I called you back in April. You said, uh, state aid road has a 20-foot shoulder on each side, which is 40 feet. And then you wanted another eight-foot shoulder.
It's always been a 12-foot lane.
No, no, no.
The 12-foot travel.
You told me 20-foot on each side. You're going to width widen the road, pavement 20 feet on each side. It's 12-foot now, and then an eight-foot shoulder. That's what you told me in the beginning of April.
We must have had a misunderstanding. All of our state aid routes have a 12-foot lane with a variable width shoulder varying from about four foot up to eight. This roadway right here, we would need, desirably in town, I think, a six-foot shoulder. So, 12 and six would be 18 feet, and then the grass would be on the outside.
Was that true on the tarred ground?
In town, my plan would be to make that a tarred paved shoulder. That's how it is in all the other towns.
Other comments?
Is it true, after, well, just for the, everybody's here, what was, what was your recommendation after the, to the county, to the, to the county board after the open house and we received all the comments? Because I think that's kind of important for the city to know.
My recommendation to the county board is to... The north portion going outside of town would be, we would try a few different fixes, probably like adding shingles to it, possibly increasing the aggregate thickness. In town, my official recommendation was not to proceed with the shoulder, but that's based upon the public meeting as to how it went. Because there was a lot of negative input. However, if we do move forward with a CASA project, then I would recommend that we do the four-foot shoulder because that's the only way we can get the funding for it. It does swap a little bit because if we make it a CASA roadway and we want to collect county state aid dollars for it, we need to follow the state aid rules. That make sense?
Yes, it does. I still, I don't even, I still have trouble understanding why we're even here if, you know, with, if, you know, considering after the open house, it was, it was pretty apparent that the public is not for the project. And I, to be, I don't see why, I don't, I think there would not be much of a change on the public's opinion just because you're trying to leverage CASA money versus county tax dollars, especially considering the expense that the city is going to take, you know, going and moving utilities. I know some people have said you were looking at $100,000. Some people have said $250,000 to $350,000. You know, so that number's in the air, but you know, there's things I do know such as the, the open lots at the end of town that the city's invested money on to, you know, putting in infrastructure for development, just three open lots that if you do, you do the widening, they're not going to be able to be sold. Those lots are going to be on the city's hands forever. They're never going to, they're never going to be public, you know, be privately owned. They're never going to expand the tax base.
To address the three open lots in that area, we would not be acquiring any new right-of-way. So, that wouldn't happen. The paved shoulder would probably actually make some of the lots more sampleable, in my opinion, because there are a lot of people that want a walking area separate from the traffic lanes because of safety reasons, so...
Is there other comments?
I found it noticeable that you gave us two options. One, we widened things out to an extraordinary space for the traffic that's on that road. You haven't given us a real good solid why you even need to do this project. The second choice was we only widened it up just a little bit. Third option I would see is we don't do a darn thing. Because I see a whole lot of infringement for absolutely no gain, no return. You keep saying a whole lot of people, and yet I live right there. My, my wife and my kids and I frequently walk down that road, and the only time that we've ever had a problem, and we had an unruly teenage driver that just didn't want to get over and, you know, cross the yellow line. Only car that was on the whole road, the entire walk all the way from the Speller Store down to, to Eighth Avenue or Eighth Street. And yet, that was the only time in, in the two years we've lived in this town that we ever had a problem with somebody causing us a... I want to know who all these people are. They're supposedly having problems walking safely down the curb that's already there. My kids can ride their bicycles there, while my wife are holding hands side by side, and we don't have problems walking on the side of the road safely.
Just from the standards that the state has developed, it should have a shoulder on. But that's, you know, the state, they do set those guidelines.
Well, and the state's dealing with state highways and other things. This is a county road.
This is a county road.
And it's not a busy county road. I've heard the goofy numbers that are doctored up and butchered into little pieces to try and push an agenda, and they aren't true. There's absolutely no substance to that, to that survey.
I guess...
The busiest, the busiest it gets is right by Trump Highway.
And they're coming from the highway, not down, down the county road.
I would guess, if you actually look from A Street down to this Trump Highway, that loop right there would, does probably get a lot of traffic. Because anybody west of town going to General Dollar or trying to get State Highway 19, that's a very popular route.
It's not a popular route. I live in the ratty, broken-down farmhouse right next to the Dollar Store. All my windows look out across that part, and I see where the, the traffic's coming all weekend long when people are at home and trying to go up there and do some last-minute shopping. They're not coming from in town, from down the, down the county road. They're coming from the highway and pulling directly in there. When you leave to come out of there, there's no one ever in front of you when you get to the stop sign. You can pull right onto Highway 19 as soon as there's a space and the traffic to pull out there. There is not a traffic problem anywhere on that county road.
I'm not saying there's a traffic problem. What I'm saying is...
Then what is the need for expanding the road out to all these additional lanes other than just we want to get some, some state funding so that we can do something else?
We're actually not talking about adding lanes, traffic lanes. We're actually talking about adding a shoulder.
Widening everything out into where it could be a four-lane road, effectively.
Right. The, the existing pavement is about 20 years old on that road.
And what's wrong with it? Have you walked it?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I've been all along that road many times. Last time we seal coated it, the cracks were probably two feet apart.
There are bigger cracks on the highway out there, all the way from here to Gaylord.
Not for a 30 mile an hour road, it's not in very bad shape. Not at all. Now, when was the last time? 2003, I think you said, or 2002, you still go here?
2003, it's snow, we seal coated it in 2013, maybe? Yeah.
Is this the public comment portion of the...
Yes.
It's like... This is kind of bizarre.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I've got a comment.
Go, go ahead.
We were promised to have this road tarred when it was rebuilt. It's supposed to sit there and cheer, and then it was going to be tarred. We've been listening to this crap for 30 years plus. People that live outside of town, yeah, you don't get traffic on the road. Why you don't get traffic on the road? Who wants to drive a gravel road into town? I drive all the way around either to 1915 or go to County Road 4. And if I go to County Road 4 and I've got a parent to run, it's just as close for me to go to Gaylord as it's to winch. The people are being ostracized with fighting a caring of a county road that's going to benefit the community.
It's not going to benefit the community. It's going to benefit a couple of people that live out beyond that point. And I don't have a problem if you want to get some pavement up there in the space that's already wide and it's not part of the count. There, it's already out.
I didn't come here to argue or do anything else. I just came to offer an opinion. You can disagree with me, but I've lived here my entire life. We were promised this many years ago. And for some reason, we get shorted, shorted every time a project gets done. So, then the people on the east end that move out from the cities and live on a gravel road and want to have their nice, idyllic little five acres, find out that they don't like driving on the gravel roads. So, we take all our tax money and spend it on the east end.
Alright.
For the benefit for us and our community.
Thank you for your comments. We do want to make sure everybody gets an opportunity. So, if you have a comment, you can go ahead and sit down, Tim, that's fine. Ron?
I agree with Gary.
Raise his hand, so please raise your hand. You'll get a chance to.
I agree with Gary. If we don't do this, we're going to be 20 years down the road, and then what are we going to have? It's going to be a mess. We, like Tom said, we were promised this a long time ago, which is fine, but why put everything? It's not like they're not going to spend the money. If people think they're not going to spend the money, forget it. It's going some other place in the county. Why not take it here? And people will use that road more to come into Winthrop if it is tarred. That is a fact. I know a lot of people that do not take that road because it is gravel and rough and muddy.
Or to go here.
Okay.
Why let it go to Gaylord?
Thank you.
Rob?
Travelorn?
Mr. Engineer?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Stop me at any point. I'm just trying to clarify a certain scenario, and this is based on information I recall from the open house. If I got part of it wrong, interrupt me, please. But it's my, it's my understanding that north of A Street, that roadbed is about as wide as it would be even if all these improvements were made.
You are correct.
Uh, in order to economize on the project, in that scenario, it is recommended that the road be engineered up to give it the specifications that it needs to become a 10-ton road, which would require shoulders to go up.
We would have to add additional structure pavement down aggregate to a certain seam of about five inches, and that's why we go with it.
Well, I understand there would be extra cost involved, but is it possible to engineer that road, get the same specification by taking the road down slightly, therefore, and I realize you don't have, you already have the right-of-way. You don't have to ask permission or buy any additional right-of-way. But could you go down, meet your specification, and not expand upon the right-of-way? Is that possible?
From E Street to the north? That would be possible, yes. E Street to the south, right now, the existing right-of-way is 33 feet, and that just would not be possible.
And forgive me, I speak somewhat selfishly. My mom just spent a ton of the old building, a new house on that section of road that I'm talking about right now, and she's concerned about her right-of-way. And I know that doesn't solve everybody's problem, but it does solve potentially quite a few problems along that stretch. It certainly addresses the problem that was brought up before about encroaching on those lots that might be hard to market in the future. So, I guess I would implore the engineering side of this as well as the governing side of this, to, if the project is going to go ahead, please consider spending, what I hope to be just a little bit of extra money, to take the road down a little bit, get what you need out of it, but eliminate some of these issues that are being brought up here now, please, would?
Alright. Rob?
Well, thanks for the county for having the open house and the commissioners being there at the time. Thanks for the council tonight listening to us. And to agree with our commissioner, Mr. Krugel, it is public safety, but the problem is, I think he sees public safety different than I do. And I live on the part of the section from Eighth Street down to Trump Highway by the Dollar Store. It's not going to affect my yard that much. I've got quite a bit of grass. My neighbors beside me, they can speak for themselves, but I've got quite a bit of grass. It's not going to affect me one way or the other. Neighbor to the north of me, she could speak to her, she spoke at the last meeting, and she would like to be able to walk through the grandkids along that road. My problem is there, we put, by Jim, it's all the way to County Road 10. You're going to increase traffic so much. I don't care how big that shoulder is, you're not going to want to walk on that road because you're going to have so many overweight, over-limit semis traveling that road. You've already got, it's already the Sibley County dragway from teenagers and everything else using it now. So, I don't care how big of a shoulder you've got, you're not going to be able to safely walk along there because you're going to increase the amount of traffic, heavy, heavy truck traffic that's going to be a nuisance to anyone trying to walk through there. You got kids, you got kids down behind the motel that can, that won't even be able to ride their bike in their own driveway because the right-of-way is approached so far toward those people's front door. You had a gentleman here who's at the corner of Eighth Street. It's going to be right up against his garage. Mr. Butler here is going to encroach upon his property to where his kids can't play in the front yard. To me, that's public safety. I'm not against progress. I've worked with the council, I've worked on the council. You guys know, I've pushed for projects, I've, progress, I've pushed for that whole, for the UFC expansion. I've pushed for that whole housing development out there. And I understand this is a 30-year-ago project, but maybe we can look at other places. And I understand, we don't want all of our money to go to the other side of the county, but just to say because it's our turn, is that the best, highest and best use of our county taxpayers' money? Just because it's our turn? Maybe we should look at focusing this, these dollars, do what we have to do to resurface this road, and we talked about it in the open hearing at the county, by digging down five feet, or five inches, excuse me, and resurfacing that amount. We also talked about, you guys haven't addressed the potential drainage issues that are up when you straighten out the curves and stuff. Mr. Travelorn brought that up before. He said, when it was first put in, he could tell you that there were drainage issues there, and they were never addressed, and there's still drainage issues there. So, I'm just saying, I'm approaching this from a public safety aspect. Personally, not going to affect me. I'm going to lose a little bit of grass, but I'm worried more about my neighbors, and I'm worried more about, let's spend the money where its best and highest use can be gained, not just because it's our turn.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Next comment? Go ahead.
I think everybody in this room knows my opinion, and I guess, if not now, when? I guess, like Tom said, we were promised this many years ago. I thought it said the same thing. You know, if not now, when? I feel for some of the people that are close, but when is it going to happen?
Pete, you had your three minutes. I want to make sure we get everybody else having an opportunity. Go ahead. Mr. Swenson?
Just, just a comment. You know, you look about spending county taxpayer dollars, can you limit that? Well, basically what's happened, so you understand the process, Tim has come up with a five-year plan and then some. And in that five-year plan, we've got X amount of dollars to spend each year. And what we do as a county board is to figure out what the priorities are. Two years ago, one of the priorities, very similar to this one, was County Road 160 up toward Bell Plain. And there were landowners there that wanted it, and then we went ahead and said, okay, let's get her done. And then we had a half a dozen of them. I can't just say it not politically correct, but they basically want to be made millionaires for the land we had to purchase from them, or the houses we had to purchase from them. And we said, no, we're not going to go there because that is not wise use for the tax money. But what did happen is this, and I guess, kind of, I think is what our, what our thoughts are on the county board at this point, is we've got a budget to work with, we try and fit the roads in there that we can do with that budget. And a case like this one here, this is on, possibly down three years from now, four years from now, somewhere like that, about three. So, what we're looking at is not going to happen next year if, if you decide you do want to do it. It's not going to happen for three, four more years, but it gives the county a chance to plan. And basically, I'll just comment, and I'm not trying to be politically correct, I'm just telling you what it is. Some people have already mentioned it. We've got X amount of dollars to work with. We have a priority list. County Road 160 was on that list here two years ago, and we decided, we're not going to get in your fighting contest. If you guys decide you want to do it, you're on the list, we'll move forward with it. If you guys can't agree on it, then there's other places in the county we can move up, you know, that's at five years from now, we'll move up to the fourth year, or third year, move up to the second year. I mean, that, that's what the process has been. So, we're not going to force this down your throat. If you don't want it, you don't want it. But to say, well, if we don't put the money here, we're going to save that money, that's not going to happen. It's, all it does is change the priority list.
Right.
We've got X amount of dollars to work with, and that's, we have, that's how we, how we budget that. So, that, that's, so everybody's clear on that. I can't tell you where it's going to go, if it's going to the east side or whatever,[1769.52] I can't tell you where it's going to go, if it's going to the east side or whatever, but again, you've got X amount of dollars to work with, we're trying to work within a five-year plan and we need you to tell us, do you want to be a part of that five-year plan?
Alright.
That's really the bottom line.
Thank you, Jim. Other comments?
Can I just ask a point of clarification on the cost? Had the city, it was mentioned earlier, and I'm just wondering, did, has the city done a cost analysis of if you did a four, or six, or eight-foot shoulder, what it would cost to move the utilities along there from the Dollar Store? Does anybody have any?
Parties got it wrong.
Probably 19 up to Eighth Street, about 80,000.
Okay.
Now, I got a question for Tim. Tim, you said you walked that 57.
Mm-hmm.
Are them transformers and stabilizers far enough away? I didn't see no, some markets. If they don't have to be moved, you know, that's another 80, maybe 100,000, I don't know why they came up, but 300,000.
That was brought up there by the public meeting.
Oh, okay, I never thought about that.
No, that's, I mean, that's bigger than they were sold out.
Unfortunately, we'd have to do some review of those, they're very close. I know right now, they're kind of right at the edge of the ditch and we would have to move, there's a tile that drains most of the properties on the west side, we'd have to move that tile out a little bit further so that might impact that those boxes I was talking about. So I just haven't looked at exactly how far off the road it is. Right now, I think it's about 35, 37 feet.
My, my point of clarification on that was, there's a water issue on...
Right, drainage issue.
...Street that, well, I've been feeding my next-door neighbor through a garden hose water to their house for the last month. Evidently, the city doesn't have that much money to be able to spend 80,000, 160,000, 200,000, whatever it turns out to be. If I'm through a 5/8 inch garden hose hooked up to my spigot, running it 300 feet to my neighbor to the north so they can have water, my God, people, let's take care of the issues that we have first. We have infrastructure issues that we need to spend money on first. I don't know, and you guys know the budget, but I can guarantee you that we just don't have money sitting around...
Right. We understand that.
...to spend that on. So I'm just concerned about that part of the cost of it.
Right.
Three years down the road, thinking that.
Other comments?
I'd throw out the one more thing, just on the, the safety issue is an option that I'll throw out there. The county, just a year or so ago, or within the last year, confiscated another 20-foot of right of way along that ditch that runs that same distance between the highway and Eighth Street. Couldn't you put in a walking, hiking, biking sort of a trail down along there that's county property, not going to be used for anything anyways? Something to throw out there.
If you're looking for...
From the public safety thing, that's, people are just looking for something that keeps them off the roadway, there's a walking, hiking, biking, something and it's not going, I don't think anybody that lives along that stretch would care about having that all the way out there back behind those fields.
Right.
Like, if I may, to address the people that live on the road, would there be any resistance to putting a sidewalk down the easement to allow access up and down that highway where the houses are at? Or is that going to turn into a NIMBY too?
For my opinion, I think you'd have to walk it again, there's the transformers and there's trees and there's other things there that might...
Just asking, is that, would that turn into a "not in my backyard" fight too?
Alright, other comments? Pete, real quick?
You know, I, I understand that, you know, that the people outside of town were promised the pavement. Couldn't we do an op, couldn't we at least consider an option three, which would be leaving the portion that's in town existing with, existing with and just consider repaving the gravel part? Because I, I think that while it would still be, you know, spending taxpayers' dollars, I think that would kind of, you know, help the city, you know, help the city's concerns financially and yet take care of the people outside of town as well.
Other comments?
I was just wondering, what, what will the speed limit be out there? Are we talking, Rob said 30, now will it go up to 55?
It'll remain 30.
It'll remain the way it is today.
30?
Yeah.
But that's probably the best compromise is what he's proposed, is just finishing the tar all the way.
But if they do that, my understanding is, then you don't get the county state aid.
Right. What would be the offset in dollars?
What are you talking about?
Between the two. If you just paved the gravel and leave the rest versus doing the quiet?
I'd probably have to discuss it with the state aid engineer, they might not come to the whole thing because usually we do whole segments, we try to design a roadway consistently from one endpoint to another, the endpoints being the state highway versus the Sautan. We really try to keep the same shoulder width on that segment, so.
Other, other comments? Anybody that hasn't had a chance to talk? Alright. Go ahead.
One thing is, everybody's kind of on the cost factor for the city. It's not the cost factor just for us living along 57 there, it's the cost factor for the whole city. So it's, everybody's going to help pay for this, not just the people along that road.
Right.
Well, I think that's something I would really like to find out about before we have any further consideration, is a much more concrete figure of what it would actually cost the city if we need to move those electrical things and...
He's talking about assessments.
Oh, right, but I mean, we, we need to know what the cost is.
That's right.
Mr. Mayor, are we debating this because of walking paths?
No.
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 Well, that's a big conversation.
That's part of it, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, part of it.
I mean, and I don't think the council cares if they pave it all the way to Hutch, you know?
What?
I mean, what does the city have to do with this?
Spending that money. Just within city limits is our concern.
Right. I understand.
And the utilities.
Basically, the utilities. Which aren't really that old in there either.
Oh, it's just good though. I know.
Are there public comments out here? Counsel, I'll give you an opportunity, is there anything you want to say?
Right now.
Okay, the reason we want the public meeting, we want an opportunity to hear from both sides. And I think it's important to hear from both sides. If that's, if there are no more comments, then we are going to close the public meeting. Alright, we will close the public here. Thank you, move on.
Yeah.
Thank you all for coming, we appreciate all the input.
Thank you.
If anybody has questions or concerns, feel free to call myself or any of the people on the council here. Alright, moving on. Resolutions, resolutions to enforce vehicle noise. Jenny, you want to talk a little bit about that?
I had a request from some residents out on the north.
Maybe you just want to take a second. A lot of people that are...
Out on the north, west side of town, to put up vehicle noise law signs.
Okay, go ahead.
I had some requests from some people out on the north, west side of town along Highway 15 to put up signs to enforce the Jake braking out there and this resolution will allow us to do that. Council Malheim asked if we could do something with the ones on 19 because there is a problem with noise of semis coming into town and I did talk to Mindat about that, I know he was asking...
Yeah, I had somebody call me last weekend.
Right now, they said we can't have two sets of signs, they could move the signs out by Heartland closer to town, but I am, I have a contact and I'm going to try to get ahold of them tomorrow and see if I explain the circumstances to him about the businesses out there and there's other, you know, businesses in town, if we, they could make an exception and I will find out and let, let you know. We have a resolution for Highway 19 already, we did that back in 2015, I think, but we need a resolution for 15 if we want to put up those signs, so.
They'll move it. I can hear it in my house.
Yeah, it's crazy, yeah.
You know, even if the windows are closed, especially when the windows are open.
Well, even, 19, right, at night.
19 or 50.
I talked to...
50.
2:00 in the morning. When we got the packet on Friday, I looked it over and I mentioned several times before that the signs are down, there's no signs out there for the noise. So just to refresh, I drove out and checked all the roads. There is a sign, there's a sign going westbound and eastbound at Heartland, they are a half mile from the city of Winthrop Sign, just on the east side of town. Talked to a semi-driver this week, I said, just out of curiosity, where do you guys expect to see those signs? And he said, right by the green sign that says, welcome to whatever your town you're in. So what's happening is, they don't realize that city limits is actually at the ethanol plant. So they're coming up to town and going, oh, hey, guess what, no sign. And that's why we need to address a second set of signs or possibly moving them. Although it's great, great community service to the ethanol plant to ask to have those put in and to pay for them, a second set would really, really help us.
About 765 a sign.
Okay, we have a motion, or a second to that motion?
Second.
700.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion, any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thanks, Julie.
Motion carries. Health insurance renewal.
Melissa provided a health insurance renewal, she's been talking to Bill Singer, our agent about it. Does anybody have any questions on, on it?
Lot of questions, but not at this point, I guess. I see the bill and you guys are going to have insurance. But I, but I, but I asked if we could negotiate that at some time or be in on January or something, when these bills come and I always get, well, we don't know what they're going to be and I'm saying, ah, come on.
Well, Bill, that kind of, the ball got dropped this year. I thought Bill was coming and then he didn't come and then it was here and so, I had every intention to invite you when he came, Pete, but he just didn't come.
No, well, I look at, it's, well, no, it's not funny, it's over 20%, 21%.
Which, which one?
Oh, I don't know which plan, you've got a bunch of plans and so I don't know which one you guys got.
19.8.
Which one?
19.8. The middle one.
20%, you know? Was that much budgeted for?
I usually put in 20, just to be on the safe side.
Sadly, that's not the realm of normal for the last several years.
But I think that's something that the council should negotiate.
Did the policy change at all? Is it the same policy?
Same policy.
Okay.
The, the first one is what we have currently right now.
Okay.
The second row is what we will have, or the third. But the third row with Medica, that is a difference of about 27 cents between our health partners and Medica, but with Medica, some of us would use our current providers.
Okay.
And that's an issue for some of us that have been, you know, want to switch to completely new doctor or clinic that doesn't know you. And we felt that we just would like to stay with what was our health partners, which is what we know and we really like it.
Right, and we do try to negotiate the policy, you know, we've raised the premiums and, you know, it's no Cadillac policy by any means.
But I do, I agree with Pete, I think, you know, we should sit down and take a look at it. I don't know if we use it for, just to stay on top of it, especially when it's coming out, I wish we would have had a little more time to look at that also.
We will do better next year.
Any other comments? Not?
I think we should go ahead this year, but I, I think we should look at it, just see what other, I don't know, what we could do with it.
Pete, we can try to get ahold of him in like April and, and, because then we have a few months before renewal and, and have some time and we'll be a little more stable.
Does League of Minnesota Cities have anything where cities can participate and...
The league doesn't, I know some cities have a co-op that they use for health insurance.
So you're just doing, you're your own group, you're not a part of any other cooperative or anything?
Correct, yeah. And I don't know what's all involved with that, but I'm sure Melissa would be happy to look into that.
Yeah.
Before next year.
Alright.
Yes, we will do better next year, I promise.
Paint a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Motion made by Dale.
Second.
Seconded by Lyle, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Not, proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Melissa Holmquist. Oh, I'm sorry, Banyan, module to send out utility bills, go ahead.
And you maybe know a little bit about this too. Matthew looked into emailing out utility bills, some people might not want to get a paper bill anymore and there is a module for $595, it's a one-time cost to set up and you want to expand on it a little bit, Melissa, or?
Yes, actually, it was brought to my attention by someone that they would like to see paperless billing and I think that's a very good idea, it'd probably save us some money as far as our inserts and billing go. So I asked Matthew to just do some digging with Banyan and how it would correlate with RevTrak and kind of everything would mesh together. And it seems to be a very simple and easy thing to do, I think many people would like it, a lot of the ones that are paying online now, when their bill comes in the mail, they just chuck it in there anyways because they're looking it up online and paying it online and putting their meter readings in online. So some of these people would have the option to just go paperless then.
So we would print out the bill when it comes on the computer?
It would just get, it would get sent to their email.
You could print it if you wanted, but you wouldn't have to.
Right.
So what do we bring in to you as well?
Nothing.
Just a check?
You wouldn't, you could pay it online.
If you want to go online. And to pay online, it's completely...
There would be, there could be no paper.
No, I kind of like my paper to look.
Well, you can keep, this is just an option.
But this is just for the people that choose to do.
Yeah, yeah.
And they would, some people didn't have the option of both.
Right.
You could get the paper bill and the email if they would like.
But I mean, you could get the email and I could print a copy off.
Yeah. So the module is a one-time fee, there's no yearly upkeep or anything like that to it?
Nope, and it meshes well with all the other programs that we use for utility billing. So it would be, and it would save some time also, you know, in some aspects.
It would save printing costs from dairy land, it would save postage.
How many people, rough estimate, how many people actually put their meter readings and so on online right now? Because I'm assuming they might be the ones that would be doing the paperless.
How many pre, how many electronically?
I'd say probably at least, I'd say probably about 60%, possibly more.
How high, how high are we in the online pay, where they, you know, the paper, on the automatic pay, how are we on that percentage-wise?
It's actually from where we started.
Yeah.
Now, I think that...
Because they'll do it too.
And I can tell you like a dollar a month.
No, just a, yeah.
There's probably about at least 47,000 that's getting paid online a month.
Done.
Yeah, then I think...
I believe we go ahead with the paperless billing or email.
Motion made by Julie.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Dale, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Please tell Matthew that this, the stuff put together was very helpful.
He did a good job.
Yeah, he had the break-even point on there too.
Yeah. He had a good tutor.
Good.
Well done. Thank you, thank you, Melissa.
There's a lot of people that don't have computers.
Yeah.
But they don't have to.
They don't have to.
People that want to do it. Yes. I, I would love it, one less envelope sitting on my house.
Okay, now, we're at Melissa Holmquist, I'm going to let Don speak on that.
Members of the council, probably for about the last six months, the city has been talking about and discussing 415 North Hennepin Street. Our building inspector has opined that that building is a hazardous building, the city council has had, talked about ways to abate that nuisance. The last couple of months, we have had closed meetings to discuss the purchase of the property. I have been negotiating and trying to work out a purchase agreement with that property. We do not have it for you two nights. Certain issues have come up along the way that have made it more difficult to, to get a deal put together, so just been walking a tight rope trying to make sure the deal doesn't fall through. We're still moving forward, but just a couple of things that I wanted to bring to the council's attention and to make sure that they won't be problem areas is, when you do have the purchase agreements fully negotiated and be for you for approval, we are probably looking at a possession date of August 1st. People may have expected that we would get it sooner, but that's where we are looking at. Also, the, the council did not necessarily anticipate earnest money going down on that property, but it looks like, uh, fully negotiated, we'll probably have about, um, a 10 percent earnest money down on it. So, so that's where we're at, we're just trying to finalize it. So I'm sure the council can appreciate some of the difficulties with getting the deal done, but that's, that's where we're at. So, um, go ahead and tell me if, uh, those things did not sound good to you, but that's what we're looking at.
I've bought a house before, it's, yeah, that sounds reasonable.
All right, continuing to negotiating. Pete, you had sidewalks down here?
Oh, yeah, that's been brought to my attention, and, I don't know, I looked at it tonight, it didn't seem that bad to me, but... Hearing a lot of people saying that they wish we'd fix our sidewalk between where we post, uh, our bills to...
Corner?
No, to, uh, which McCollum's house, to, uh, Miranda's house, to Miranda's. But I looked there, and some of those sidewalks look worse than what they're talking about ours.
Didn't we talk, did you talk about redoing some of these sidewalks?
We're looking into it, yeah.
Yeah, that's Main Street's county state aid highway.
Oh, that's right.
So...
So we don't have anything to do?
Well, we can and save the county some money from having to do it.
Well, I mean, they were, I'm saying, as I looked to the north, and it looked worse than in front of our building, so I don't know.
You're talking about what, did you have a timeline on that, or not?
Uh, we were looking possibly this fall or next year, so.
Okay.
So is that soon enough?
No.
Then we'll have to do it.
So if that's, if Main Street is county state aid highway, if a homeowner chooses to repair their sidewalk, is there any incentive for the county for them to do that before this project, or not?
Probably not.
Okay, just asking, 'cause that might get somebody off the couch, so...
And I think you're just doing up to 3rd Street here, right? You're not doing all the way down?
No, we were not gonna do all of them.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
Just gonna do some spot repairs.
Thanks, David.
All right. We have no, no unfinished business. State administrator, Jenny?
She's got a pile.
Yeah. Um, I think we're finally all good to go with the storm damage. Mitch came out, and Gordy and I, we all went and looked at all the buildings. Did you talk to Bob about...
I did talk to Bob, and we haven't met to take a look at it yet.
Okay. Uh, the only one really left to question is the sewer plant. So, other than that, we're, either they're done, or they're in process, or we know where we're going with them. Um, let's see, Karen is working on the nuisance letters, she, I did touch, touch base with her. She's working on getting the letters out, she did send Darren a list of the hazardous buildings. And he's gonna get me his new form letter to send out to people, that gives them so much time to address the issues that we have. Uh, all the employee reviews are done, except Karen's, we're gonna do hers the end of June. Don and I are gonna be working on RFP for city attorney for the July meeting, so hopefully we'll have something for approval at the August meeting. I do not have an estimate for the cameras in the park yet, I'm hoping to have that soon. Um, with the Alumni Association, we walked the park and marked the benches. Um, they're gonna meet and discuss what kind, how much, and work out their details and get back to me on that. Pete, Melissa, myself attended MMPA Tour Day at Fairbault Energy Park, where they bring the fourth graders and teach them about energy concepts and conservation. I attended MMUA Leadership Academy, May 22nd and 23rd, where we discussed ethics, character, and critical thinking skills. Election training is starting in June or in July. Filing for our city offices is July 31st to August 14th. I'm planning to have open house before the August council meeting, like, at 6:00. Coffee, cookies, people who are, if they're interested in running for office, they could come and talk to you guys, and just kind of sit in a meeting and see what it's all about. And when I went up to the legis, MMUA legislative session, Senator Newman asked me to invite him out this summer to one of our meetings, I thought that would be a good meeting for him to come. I'm gonna invite Representative Grunhagen to just extend the invitation, and see if he would like to come to the August meeting also. Uh, the housing team is holding an informational meeting for council, EDA, and planning commissions for Winthrop, Gibbon, and Gaylord to discuss housing study and incentives for cities. Shannon will be here to give a little presentation, and I have included the flyer, which you all got here. And we'll be sending those out to the groups. Gaylord's is June 14th, and Winthrop's is June 27th, here at 6 o'clock. And for the EDA, I spent 24 and a half hours on EDA-related items this month. Um, I was working with Ben Winchester to get that meeting set up down at Hans. Uh, we had about 35 people there, it was a, it was a good turnout. Um, I've been working on the website, I have Winthrop Opportunities page up now under the EDA page, and their loan application, I'm hoping to get the EDA loan application on there soon. Um, I had someone come and talk to me about opening a barber shop in the old bakery building. I sent them an EDA packet, um, I have, and some information on the Small Business Administration. I haven't heard back from them yet, but I just sent it out last week. Uh, Chris Multer's caught up on his loan, he's working on his June payments. Uh, we hoped, hosted the second business web training on May 9th, there were three businesses in attendance. Um, we also discussed a different business directory, uh, the one we have isn't real user-friendly, so... They showed me one that a different business had that, that's really more what we're looking for. So that, we're gonna, Doug and I are gonna do the rest of the businesses on there that weren't claimed, and we're just gonna put a picture and their hours and the very basic information, and if there's a website, a link to their website. But we're gonna wait and do that after we transition to the new business directory, so we don't have to move them all. So, we're working on that, it's just not gonna happen overnight. Um, let's see, the housing study I already talked about. I attended Shop Local, Winthrop Opportunities, Winthrop Chamber, Website Business Training, Sibley Housing Team, the Governor's Housing Meeting, and Sleep Eye this month.
Thank you very much. Don, is there anything that you had?
Nothing else.
Still gonna leave us in January?
Come on up, how are things going?
Good, I really have nothing.
Okay, how's it going down here at the project?
Oh, um, the temporary sewers...
That, down below were...
Yup, yup, the temporary sewers were dumped, and now we're just waiting for druggies to come back and fix it.
Still too wet, or what?
I think they got a lot on their plate. When I talked to him, he said it'd be a week to two weeks. And that was when they did that, so that was a week to two weeks ago, so...
On a garden hose?
Gordy?
Yeah, I got a question. Um, for Bob and, Bob and Kevin's house?
Yup.
And sequins, why don't we just tap it at about 57 like we did for Bob and Kevin, and forget about that 300, 400 feet? Forget about going in the field?
You gotta send me up to, is it their, is it their cost to...
Oh, sure, you got a cost, no matter what.
No, but is it...
But would it be theirs?
Their cost, sequins?
We gotta put the water shut off in.
Right, but to board from the other side of 57 all the way through the yard.
Be done with it.
So what cost would they have if you went from the ditch out?
Nothing, that's, that's where they're hooked now. So they're...
They pay for that originally?
Yes.
Well, come to that, I don't know.
They were the first ones hooked up there, and that's why they're hooked up there. Because everybody else, from what I understand, was later, and then they hooked up on 57. So then the cost would be to, the sequins, to board from 57 to their house?
For our broken line? No.
Where they're hooked up now for, to pay for?
Oh, I just, I'm cringing, I didn't know they were still on a bad hose.
Yeah, it'd be clear it'd be these, I mean...
That's, that's as much as I know on that project.
Well, I'm glad we had the budget, though, anyway. Five eight inch rubber hose.
Oh, jeez. Hope you put a backflip for that.
All right, moving on. Electrics, or our street?
Uh, electrical, I'm gonna spend about $20,000 to finish from 7th Street all the way down to 10th. That'd be live in Woods Alley.
Yup.
Down to the filter. Two spools of wire, that's $6,000 a piece, and a transformer I'm looking at between $6,000 and $8,000 for the water plant.
Okay.
So then we should be done.
Say, what about that generator? That, no, I mean, we bought that almost as, when the county road went in, and it's still sitting in there, and we're not using it.
Well, so from what I understand on that project is we are waiting on Bonnie's electric. If it was approved, everything was paid for, correct? The money is allocated for, and you're waiting for...
Bonnie's here for many years to...
I thought they came in here just last week.
They're working on that project in the alley, that's something else.
Should we find somebody else, then, I mean?
I don't know, Gordy.
That's what, I mean, for the filter, I would've did that a long time ago. And you talk about a generator, I would sell that old one?
Yup.
And buy something like the old folks own, that ones, every day, or automatic. We got some we shouldn't have.
A natural gas.
That's all I'm gonna say about it.
Oh, come on.
Get a natural gas one?
I've heard more than that.
Yeah, right.
Anything else, Gordy?
No.
Anything for the fire department?
No.
You're not asking for anything this?
You sure? Racing stripes?
Uh, no one is here from the ambulance police chief's report.
Uh, I passed it out right before the meeting.
Is Karen gonna be here tonight, or no?
Um, I don't think so.
Three to 24.
Wanted her to be, I guess.
Okay. Cable commission report, there is no meeting. I've got nothing else.
Nothing else.
Entertained a motion to adjourn. Motion made by everyone? Is there a second by anyone?
I have Bob and Pete.
Okay, Bob and Pete, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
That's right by the filter, you know, that shed, the garage. Water treatment, yeah.
Killing that meeting.
That big shed, yeah.
Well, they, they want it to be saved.